Welcome, everyone. We'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. First, we'll be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner. Then our pledge to the flag will be from Commissioner Reed.
Heavenly Father, thank you again for this opportunity for us to gather here and do the business of the people of Rutherford County. I just ask that you be with us, Lord, that you be with us as a country. There's a lot of division there that I feel that can only be healed through the love of you, that we practice that, that we honor you, that we love our brothers, we are our brothers' keepers, that we move past some of this division, Lord, and identify the things that actually unite us and allow us to move this country together forward in a direction that honors you and honors those who have gone on before us. We think about the Siskin family tonight with the loss of Judge Siskin. I just ask that you continue to hold them close, give them a sense of peace and comfort that's only provided by you. Allow us to honor you tonight as we go through the agenda of the people's business. Allow us to speak with clarity and conviction, but also speak with respect and humility as it relates to this business. We give all these things to you in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Joining in honoring our country, we pledge our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kusch.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Mayor.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio. We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you very much. You have been presented a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Before we read the minutes, I'd like to just take a few seconds to acknowledge the work of the women of the Farm Bureau and what they did for us tonight. I'm not sure that they're in here, but if they would stand up, thank you. We appreciate your effort.[184.81][184.81](APPLAUSE). If you would just take a second and give us your name. Once again, thank you. Our heartfelt appreciation. Thank you. Mayor Burgess, I've reviewed those minutes of our June 27 meeting. I find them in order. I move that we dispense with the reading and that we adopt them as presented.
Second, Commissioner Kusch, did anyone have any corrections or additions? All right, if not, all of you that are in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution of sympathy on behalf of Circuit Court Judge Keith Siskin. We'll call on Commissioner Sereno.
Are there any family members with us?
I do not see any, Mr. Serenio. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Siskin and I, I have known him for a long time, and when he was attorney for the juvenile court, sometime he called me for interpretation with the family who had a language barrier. And also, when he moved into my district, 2014, he sent me a note that he had moved into my district. I'm so sad to learn about his. Now, resolution of sympathy. Whereas it was so sad, great sadness to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, learn about his judge, Keith Siskin, Rutherford County Judge, Circuit Court Judge Part III, and friend of many. Whereas Judge Siskin survived by his visceri and his daughter, Erica and Shane, and his parents, Jim Siskin, Siskin, and Madeleine Warner, and the stepmother, Diane Siskin, his younger brother Brad Siskin, and maternal grandmother Sarah Deach, and many other relatives and friends and colleagues. And whereas Judge Siskin was first appointed referee magistrate of Rutherford County Juvenile Court, and then to the Circuit Court, until his passing. Whereas he was an active member of a community and served as president of Rutherford County Bar Association, and the member of the American Association, Tennessee Bar Association, the Tennessee Geodesque Conference, and Murfreesboro Downtown Barista Lion Club. Whereas we know that the passing, that caused a great sadness to his family and friends. Now, where is the result? It further result to that Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and we just, uh, re- reassessed in August 17, 2017. Thus hereby extend the sympathy, sincere sympathy to the family and Judge Keith Siskin. And based result, that the copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Siskin by the clerk of this body represented.
And...
The chairman and move for approval.
All right. And a second from Commissioner Phillips, and everyone is raising their hand back there. So, all of you then in favor of that, please say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to Judge Siskin and for all the community service that he's given for all of us citizens here in Rutherford County. Thank you, Mr. Serenio. Next, we'll call again on Commissioner Phillips for a resolution of appreciation. Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Doug. Will.
(INAUDIBLE).
Nope. Those of us that know Will well, and has, have worked with him for a number of years, realize how hard it is for him to stand up here and take this. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to do it, is so that he would have to stand up and take it tonight. The planning commission work that Will has done, those of us that have served on the planning commission and are familiar with that, know the type of work that Will has done on that commission. It's not an easy assignment. It's a tough assignment with a lot of difficult decisions to make, a lot of educational process that you have to go through to prepare yourself for those meetings. And Will has been a leader on that commission for 15 years. This resolution of appreciation is well deserved, and Will asked if it could be put on the consent agenda. Mayor Burgess said no. I said no, and he's going to have to take it like a man here tonight. You'll probably get your chance to retaliate at some point in time, Will, so don't be discouraged. Resolution of appreciation for Will Jordan. Whereas Commissioner Will Jordan has served Rutherford County with dedication and distinction as a member of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission since October 2002. And whereas Commissioner Jordan has decided to step down from the planning commission at this time, and whereas he has given to Rutherford County his time, skills, commitment of his ability, and performed his duties as a member of the planning commission in a fair and judicious manner. And whereas Will did consistently consider the rights of individuals, as well as the rights of all the citizens of Rutherford County when making a decision. And whereas, over the past 15 years, he has developed a positive working relationship with other members of the planning commission, planning department, and all Rutherford County staff. And whereas Will has demonstrated in countless ways his dedication to the welfare of others and has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages who are proud to call him friend. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session this 17th day of August 2017, thus hereby extend sincere appreciation to Commissioner Will Jordan for his 15 years of dedicated service to Rutherford County as a member of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be forwarded to Commissioner Will Jordan by the clerk of this legislative body, resolved this 17th day of August 2017. Mayor Burgess, I move for adoption.
And second, Commissioner Piercy and any number of others. All of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan.[661.62][661.62](APPLAUSE). Okay, now is a time for public comments, and we have four people that wish to speak. And I think they all know this, but we remind them that the time limit is three minutes. Come forward and give us your name and address, and make your comments, please. Susan, excuse me, Suzanne Jamison Sullivan. Is that person with us tonight? Okay, I don't see that person rising, so we'll go to the second person, Susan Allen.
My name is Susan Allen. I live at 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. And I want to start out by telling Will Jordan that, you know, when your time is over in that seat, come on out and join us.[747.01][747.01](LAUGHTER). On July 31, the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance participated in a meeting with the Rutherford County Ethics Committee. We appreciated that opportunity and are grateful that such a committee exists. We feel the committee needs to add additional structure for these meetings, and the RNA is using this opportunity to submit our suggestions for such discussions to build on. We think more precise guidelines shared with both the complainant and the person or persons in question would be helpful, since in our case, we were merely advised that the committee may allow us to make a brief presentation. We received no instructions about procedure or time limits to speak, and we felt we were not given equal time for our arguments. Our suggestions begin with guidelines on how to submit a complaint which contains enough information to guide the Ethics Committee members and the chairperson through their meeting, allowing sufficient time for testimony, investigation, and discussion in order to reach fair and impartial decisions. We hope these suggestions will be useful in assuring due process for all parties. You all have a copy that I handed out before the meeting, and we will be sending one to the Ethics Committee Chair as well. Thank you for this opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Wayne Sewell.
My name is Wayne Sewell. I live at 148 Davis Lane in Unionville. I'm here to talk about the store in Rockville. Why, I mean, I got a question. Why the location for the convenience center? Why there?
This is not a dialogue. This is your time and your opportunity to speak.
Right, right, right. I'm not expecting an answer.
Okay.
It's just a question. So, there's other places in Rockville that would be more convenient, or expand the one that's there by, if you want to move a building, remove the fire hall that's sitting behind the convenience center, and expand it that way. That way, the trucks can go in and out of the drive where the fire hall is now. Or leave the store where it's at because it's on the historic registry. If it's moved, it comes off, and there's a lot of history. My dad was born and raised in Rockville. My grandmother ran and operated the switchboard in the house next door to the store. So there's a lot of family history in that building because they shopped there. I've been in that store. I've shopped there. And I'm for preserving history, not destroying it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mandy Williams.
My name is Mandy Williams, and I live at 11090 Versailles Road. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak tonight about property management and the similarities between the proposed Rockville Convenience Center site and the Las Casas site. In 2013, there was a similar situation with county-owned property and the convenience center in Las Casas. Their community was included and involved in the process, and ultimately, an alternate site was located, thus rendering a win-win situation for the county and the Las Casas community. Our Rockville community has requested and was hopeful to have had a community meeting, but for whatever reason, to date, that has not happened. At the June 22 property management meeting, there was an overflow crowd, yet no one was invited to speak. I've sent numerous emails about the proposed Rockville site, and I've had zero responses. First question I have is why? Why no response? The second question I have is why? Why here? Why this particular spot for trash? Why won't the county seek or look for an alternate location? As a matter of fact, the county currently has property for sale on South Wind Row Road in Rockville. It's less than five miles from the current site. Has this even been considered or explored? The districts are divided equally by population, yet District 8 has three convenience centers. And the 132 square miles in the district, there simply has to be another suitable site not yet explored. The hub, the new county growth, is not in historic Rockville proper, but our irreplaceable history is there. You may have heard that there are only a handful of people, of folks in our community interested in saving our historic Rockville store. That is simply not true and inaccurate. Certainly, there is an online petition to preserve this unique piece of Rutherford County history where it stands with nearly 800 signatures, and I'd like to share some of the posted comments with you that are on the petition. Save the store. It's full of history. You can see the history in the walls and floors. The old store needs to stand. Many memories when I was in high school. Loved my cheese sandwiches and all kinds of kids coming in and out. Stop destroying history. It's not progress, it's just a mess. Hung out at that store with my buddies many days. I remember bottled cokes and bologna sandwiches. Save the story and the history. Progress is saving the past. I grew up in this store. It's hidden hometown treasures like this that make America so great. In an age where it seems we're in favor of tearing down the old for the bright and shiny new, keeping a piece of history should be a top priority. Thanks for your time, and please help us save our store because this place matters. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner, elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Commissioners, on your iPad, you should find a list of notaries that we need to approve. And Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook.
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kusch.
I would like to add one more addition to that list, if I may. This was a late request. Mr. Michael Gasser, who resides here in the county on Casey Lane, has requested and contacted the county to be added to that notary list. So if I may, has asked to add his name to that list, Michael Gasser. And we have that form.
Have that down, Mr. Clerk.
Make a motion to add that, Mr. Gasser's name to the list.
Okay. And the second, Commissioner Phillips, and we'll take that motion first. All of you in favor of adding that name, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we got a motion, a second on your motion, I believe, then we missed it, Turner.
Yes.
So, we ready to vote on that? And if someone has another one they'd like to add? All of you in favor of approving these notaries, electing them, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Steering would like to also fill the vacancy on the Community Care Board, and steering would nominate Ms. Fay Eland. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for her approval.
Second by Mr. P. and Ms. Cook, I believe, and others. All right, anyone else have any nominations? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Steering would also like to fill three vacancies on the Industrial Development Board and the Health and Education and Facilities Board. Steering would like to nominate Mr. David Waldron, Mr. Jimmy Evans, Mr. Rob Lyons. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Mr. McAdoo and Mr. Jordan. All right, any other discussion or nominations? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Congratulations to, at least two of them are here with us.
Steering would like to also announce vacancy on the Code's Enforcement Board. Steering would like to also announce the appointment of Judiciary Commissioners Laura Davis and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for her approval.
All right, and we need a second on that. Ms. Allen, thank you. Any further appointments or nominations? If not, all of you in favor, again, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would like to also announce the reappointment of Chip Pinion and the appointment of Commissioner Pettis Reed to the planning commission. Commissioner Kusch was, he supports you, Commissioner. That's all right. I like the energy. That's perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Kusch. Steering would like to also announce the election of the chairman pro temp at the September Commission meeting. Steering would like to also announce the election of the commission chaplain at the September Commission meeting. And at this point, I'd like to turn over this portion of our meeting and agenda to our chairman pro temp, Commissioner Jeff Phillips.
Brad, at this time, we'll entertain nominees for the position of commission chairman, the tentative position. And the floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Phillips, I nominate Mayor Burgess.
I nominate Allen McAdoo.
So we have one nominee.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion for acclamation?
Make that motion, Commissioner Phillips.
Second, all that's in favor of electing Mayor Burgess by acclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips, and congratulations to Mayor Burgess. Again, at this point of the meeting, I will also turn this portion over to Mayor Burgess for the election of the steering committee.
We're ready for you to submit your nominations for the position of being on the steering committee, and does everyone have one of their, first of all, while we're doing this, do you have your ballots that you're going to turn in for your committee selections? So when we finish this, we need all of those to be given to Mr. Spence here. What we're going to do is like we always do, every one of you has an opportunity to nominate one person to serve on the committee. So you can rise and do it in that order, raise your hands. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Baum needs a form, but I nominate Trey Gooch.
All right. Let's see, Mr. McAdoo, did you want to nominate someone? So, Mr. Clerk, you and Mrs. Clerk are writing this down for us, right?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Jernigan?
I nominate Allen McAdoo.
Don't get him on something there, right?[1506.01][1506.01](LAUGHTER). Okay, Mr. Gooch?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Mr. Johnson. All right, Mr. Jordan?
I nominate Robert P.
Mr. P. Now, Mr. Stevens?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Brad Turner.
All right, Mr. Turner. Isn't that been nominated? Ms. Allen?
I'd like to nominate Robert Stevens.
Allen has nominated Mr. Stevens. Now, does anyone else wish to nominate anyone? And Mr. Clerk or Ms. Clerk, how many nominees have we received?
We received, received seven.
So we have seven nominees. Does anyone else wish to nominate one?
Make the motion to nominate, uh, to be closed, the nomination is closed, and we go by that.
All right, and we need a second on that.
Second.
Ms. Cook and Mr. Nipper, I believe, and others. All right, we have seven, and that's how many positions are available. And the nomination is to close those nominations and elect this group by acclamation. All right, there being no other discussion, all of you in favor of doing that, then just please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now it's a time for these seven people to go into room 205 and take action to select their chairperson and vice chairman, and report back. So we'll just stay tuned in here for a few moments till they make this decision. Our steering committee has met. They have chosen Mr. Trey Gooch as its chairperson and Mr. Brad Turner as its vice chair. They will continue to meet the first Monday of each month at 5:30. All right, it's a couple minutes past 6:30, so it's time for us to have these public hearings. And we do have five public hearings scheduled for tonight. First is Resondating Request 17-A016 from Mr. Patel. First is rezoning request 17-A-016 from Mr. Patel, located 8216 Florence Road. The existing zoning is residential medium density with proposed zoning of commercial services on a site of about 5.3 acres, and about 1.6 acres of that five acres is to be rezoned. Mr. Demosi, you may tell us more about that.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission. A portion of the subject property was zoned for commercial purposes originally back in 1981. When the current zoning ordinance took effect back in 2013, the entire property was zoned for residential medium density use. Staff realized that, at that time, the existing store on the property would become a nonconforming use, but being that we were dealing with new zoning districts and uses and system at that time, we were a little hesitant to recommend a zone that allowed for a greater variety of uses. The presence of the residential units on the property that are there also factored into that decision. The current store, the current use of the store is a bait and tackle and convenience market. The applicant desires to expand the offerings at the store and also construct gasoline pumps. While state and county nonconforming laws do allow for the current use to continue and even expand, when you start introducing new uses onto the property, a rezoning application is needed. So, that's what the applicant has done. When the applicant came to staff to discuss this issue, we did recommend pursuing a commercial services zoning request. Access to the property is and will continue to be from Florence Road. A site plan will be need, will need to be submitted to staff. The applicant is aware of that, and I believe already is in the process of getting started in that process should this be approved. This would show all parking access ways designed consistent with county regulations. The town of Smyrna, being that the right of way is within their jurisdiction, they would like to see the access to the property revisited upon redevelopment of the property, which we concur and feel that that's a reasonable request. Type 2 buffer will be required. Again, that'll be shown on the site plan, and it will also have to meet our current performance standards. This property has been used in this manner for a number of years. Again, the request is really due to the fact that the uses on the property are changing somewhat. With that, staff would recommend approval, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval of this by a unanimous vote. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Demosi before we have the public hearing? All right, Mr. Demosi, then, please stand by, and we will declare the public hearing open for those wishing to speak regarding rezoning request 17-A-016. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this request? I do not believe anyone wishes to speak, therefore, we will declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion regarding this rezoning request? Mr. Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
And Commissioner Dodd, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next is rezoning request 17-A-017. On behalf of AJ's Tree Service by Matt Bratton, located at 1619 Flat Rock Road, existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of about 7.3 acres, and only about .41 acres of that is to be rezoned. Mr. Demosi?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. The applicant recently purchased the property at 1601 Flat Rock Road for his tree service business. The property was zoned commercial services when the new zoning map took effect back in 2013 and has been zoned for commercial purposes since 1997. The applicant plans to use the existing building on the property as an office. The office building and whatnot on the property used to be a plumbing business at the time. The applicant has also purchased the subject property that is under consideration tonight and proposes to zone about half an acre, .41 acres, to commercial services and combine it with the property at 1601 Flat Rock Road in order to expand his business. There's a copy of a conceptual site plan that's included in your agenda packets on your iPads. The proposed buildings will be used to house the trucks associated with his business as well as a shop to maintain the trucks. There will be about four trucks that leave in the morning and return in the evening. The applicant submitted material stating that traffic's primarily employee-related with occasional customer traffic. The remaining property that's under consideration, the larger tract, will still remain zoned for residential purposes. That's not planning to change. Access to the property will continue to be from Flat Rock Road, as shown on the concept plan. There are currently two access points to the property with a third proposed on the subject property. Of course, a site plan will needed, be needed to make sure that it'll conform to, conform to all county regulations as well as landscaping and the performance standards. The portion of the subject property to be rezoned and combined with the CES is located to the northwest, that site. The site will function in a similar manner as the former plumbing business on the property, and staff is comfortable with the request. There was very little discussion at this at the Planning Commission. Again, the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously in favor of this. I made this statement at the Planning Commission, and will also make it here, that the applicant about a year ago had done a little bit of work at our house. We had a large tree that needed to come down in our front yard. That work long predated this application. There was no conflict, but I just wanted it out there in case somebody asked. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demosi? All right, then, we will declare the public hearing open for those wishing to speak on behalf of rezoning request 17-A-017. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this request? Again, we do not see anyone coming forward, therefore, the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion? Commissioner P.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
A second from Mr. Phillips and, I believe, Mr. Serino. Any other discussion? If not, all of you in, then in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Demosi? Next, we have rezoning request 17-A-018. Requester is Mr. Ray Roth, located at 9647 Franklin Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning, again, is commercial services on a site of about two acres. Mr. Demosi, tell them more, please.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. The applicant recently purchased the subject property along Franklin Road and would like to use it for a glass contractor's business. According to information submitted by the applicant, they plan to finish remodeling the existing structure and build additional pole building for the business. Of course, this will require a site plan to be submitted for Planning Commission review. They also indicate a desire to preserve as many large trees as possible and to also further landscape the property. The use would be categorized under the Construction, Sales and Services Activity Classification in our zoning ordinance, which is allowed by right in the commercial services zone. In your agenda packets, you'll see some conceptual drawings for the property. Those aren't anything that he's necessarily locked into, but that gives you an idea of what he wants to do. The property, along with the property directly to the west, which is at 9691 Franklin Road, were once one property, about three acres in size, and were zoned for commercial purposes back in the late 1980s, although it's difficult to determine on the older zoning maps if the rezoning request back in the 80s was for the entire property or only a portion. The previous zoning map did indicate the entire property. This property was subdivided into two parcels in 1993. The property at 9691 was a subject of another zoning request for a conditional use permit granted back in 1996 for a daycare and another granted in 2001 for architectural and ornamental work. It, neither of those conditional use permits affected the subject property, but that property next to this one is zoned commercial neighborhood, whereas the one that we're concerned tonight is zoned for residential purposes. There are other, other non-residentially zoned properties located about a quarter of a mile to the east of the subject property, and there was also a conditional use permit granted for a piece of property directly across the street for a welding business, which I alluded to earlier in the report. Actually, I didn't go over that, but it's, it's listed earlier in the report back in the 1980, late 1980s, again, with an approval for an expansion back in 1991. Again, access parking, landscaping, performance standards, all of those things would be subject to a site plan if this were to be approved and would have to meet all county requirements. There were several concerns voiced by some of the surrounding property owners during the public hearing. Some of the issues they brought up included updating of the septic system on the property, which, of course, if it turns out the septic system is not adequate to handle what he needs or wants to do on the property, he would have to find additional soils to take care of that. The existing condition of the property and possible cleanup. When the applicant purchased the property, he purchased it kind of in a state of disrepair. The existing structure was in the process of being demolished, and he wants to remodel that structure. There was a lot of debris and everything. I talked with our codes director, Ms. Tanya Bell, this morning. She had gone out to the site and visited it, and a lot of cleanup has been done. She said it actually looked like it was in good shape. The structure itself is still, of course, needing work, but a lot of the debris and everything had been cleaned up, and that was something I know that was brought up and discussed at the Planning Commission. Some other concerns were just if there're going to be retail sales, number of employees, of course, traffic and drainage, things that we would look at during the site plan process. After discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this application.
Any questions for Mr. Demosi? All right, then, sir. Thank you. Then we will declare the public hearing open for those wishing to speak for or against the request 17-A-018 by Mr. Ray Roth. Those of you that wish to come forward and speak for or against now is your opportunity. Does anyone wish to speak? No one is coming forward, so again, we will close this public hearing. And is there a motion? Commissioner Reed?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval with all staff comments.
All right, and we need a second. Commissioner Allen and others, I believe. Any further discussion? If not, all of you in favor of that, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have a couple of amendments from our planning staff themselves. Proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance 17-5001, Section 1003B, general provisions regarding flood hazards districts, and Mr. Demosi will explain that more.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. The State of Tennessee's National Flood Plane Insurance Program Coordinator, that's a mouthful, I know, Ms. Amy Miller, recently completed a, what's called a community assistance visit or a Cav, essentially an audit of the county's flood plane management procedures. Part of this audit involved a review of the flood plane regulations located in Chapter 10 of our zoning ordinance. The regulations were included as part of the previous zoning resolution and were carried over into our current ordinance with some tweaks to match the format that we were using. I included the language of your sec, of the section in your agenda packets there for Section 1003B. I won't read all that, but you can see what it currently says. The model flood plane ordinance, which this existing language was based off of, was changed to add all the flood insurance rate maps, the farm panels for Rutherford County. This amendment will make this change in our current ordinance. There's no other regulations or procedures being changed as a result of this change. It simply is adding all of those different panel numbers. So, you can see how we're proposing to change it, adding all those numbers and letters there. Essentially, that's what we're doing in our effective dates. Again, no change to procedure is here, but since this is a change to the zoning ordinance, this does require a public hearing and action by the Board of Commissioners. This was recommended approval, for approval by the Planning Commission by a unanimous vote. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding this request? Okay, then, we'll declare the public hearing available and open for those that wish to speak regarding these proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance 17-5001, Section 1003B. Is there anyone wishes to speak for or against? Please come forward. Okay, again, I don't believe anyone is wishing to speak, so we'll declare the public hearing closed with respect to this request. Is there a motion? Commissioner Phillips?
Chairman, I move to approve item 17-5001.
All right, and is there a second? Commissioner Dodd and Mr. Nipper? Any other discussion or questions? All of you in favor, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we have another application from our planning department regarding proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance against 17-5002, Section 1101B, regarding fences, walls, and hedges. Mr. Demosi?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Before I go into the report, I'll just make the statement right now that this is something that the Planning Commission spent several meetings on discussing. I can go into as much or as little detail as you would like me to. The report is included in your agenda packets. It's one of the last things that you'll see in the document on your iPad. There's a title page on it, which is entitled Proposed Fence Regulations in Rutherford County. I'll give some brief comments for introduction, then I'll kind of go through the changes, and if you would like for me to go into some more detail, I will. But the, the one that'll probably take the most time to explain will be the fences in the front yards, so I'll leave that one to last. The county's fence regulations are located in Section 1101B of our zoning ordinance, and they took effect with the current ordinance back in January 2013. While the regulations have, for the most part, performed effectively, we have identified some issues with the current regulations that we feel need to be addressed and what is what, which is what's bringing this before you tonight. Those issues include the fences in the front yards, fences constructed of or topped with barbed wire, clarifying the intent of the vision triangle, and then fences within utility or drainage easements. I'll refer you in that report to the recommendations overview, which you'll see on Page 6. The pages have numbers on the bottom there. The section, again, is recommended, recommendations overview. The issues, and I'm going to save the fences in front yards to last, but the first thing I want to talk about is the fences constructed of or topped with barbed wire. The reason we're bringing that up to consideration for tonight is the item in our fence regulations discusses prohibited fences, item four, and that bulleted point reads that basically fences constructed primarily of or topped with barbed wire, razor wire, et cetera, are not to be permitted unless they're used in conjunction with an agricultural use or purpose or serving a public institution for public safety or special services. Commercial establishments will sometimes also use barbed wire atop security fences for added security. We see this also in some residential areas, frequently with cell towers. So, we think that, generally speaking, they shouldn't be used in residential areas just for residential homes, but for agricultural uses, some permitted non-residential uses in residential zones and for commercial uses, it should be permitted. So, the proposed language that you see in the recommendations overview will just do that. Somebody wants to do one in a residential subdivision, that wouldn't be permitted, but for cell towers, if somebody had a commercial business, something like that, on commercially zoned property, they would be allowed to do that. We just think that's an appropriate change at that point. The, clarifying the intent of the vision triangle. Item nine of our regulations state that fences, walls, or vegetation that interfere with a clear vision at or near a public or private street, alley, et cetera, et cetera, is not permitted and is prohibited. This provision is alluding to our vision triangle, which is specifically defined in our zoning ordinance in Appendix A. So, we're just proposing to change the language to clarify that, to reference that definition in the zoning ordinance. That's really more of a housekeeping change, in my opinion. Same, I think, with the fences and utilities and drainage easements. While generally understood that fences are not permitted in utility or drainage easements, there's no specific or explicit language in our fence regulations that state that. So, what we're proposing to do is just to add a statement, number 11, which essentially states that, if they're not going to be permitted in utility or drainage easements unless permitted by the utility holder or written, or in writing by the county engineer for a drainage easement. The one that created the most discussion had to do with fences in front yards. And if I could ask you to turn to Page 2 in that report, you'll see three graphics on there. You'll see, it's basically a graphic of three lots. According to our current regulations, between the principal building, the front of the principal building and the street right of way, no fence or wall shall exceed four feet in height. You can see the illustration on Graphic 1 there, kind of show you the limits of where you can put an eight-foot fence. You can put an eight-foot fence around all of the property lines except from the front of the principal structure to the front property line. You can see that Lot B on Graphic 2, it says Lot B has installed a privacy fence measuring six feet in height along the property lines. The fence does not project past the front of either Lots A or Lot C, the fronts of those buildings. However, the fence was erected by the owner of Lot B, since it's beyond the front of their home. That fence is actually a violation of our current code. Now, if you look at Graphic C, if the fences had been constructed, the same limits of fence had been constructed by either Lot A or Lot C, you have the same limits of fence, but that's legal because it's on the other side of the property line. So, essentially, what we're trying to do is come up with some language that is consistent and fair across the board, rather than trying to say that one person can go this far, one person can go that far. So, what we ended up doing, and we researched quite a bit of this when we looked at surrounding communities, see how other communities handled this, you can see under the recommendations overview, and I'll just kind of read that. In any residential district, no fence or wall shall exceed eight feet in height inside and rear yards. Fences in front yards may be eight feet in height, provided that fences within the required front yard, which is the front setback, that 40 feet from the front property line, 40 feet in. They can be of eight feet in height, but they have to be of a transparent construction, like a split rail, a picket chain link, something like that. The reason we decided on that was there was some concern from the emergency services providers about being able to adequately see coming up upon a house. They didn't want like a fortress-style fence around a, around a particular property. So, that's what we're proposing to do there. And you can see, we've proposed to eliminate a little bit of language just for consistency's sake in commercial and industrial districts. I'll be more than happy to go into more detail about this. I know that the front yard especially, again, was, caused a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission over several meetings. At the last public hearing, however, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of these changes by a unanimous vote. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Demosi? All right, you must have done a good job there, sir. All right, you must have done a good job there, sir. Therefore, we will declare the public hearing open for proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance seventeen dash five thousand and two, section eleven oh one B, fences, walls, and hedges. That proposed amendment is open for public discussion. Anyone wishing to speak for or against that now is your opportunity. All right, no one is rising to come forward again, so it, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion concerning this proposed amendment seventeen dash five thousand and two? Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I move to approve Planning Commission item seventeen dash five zero zero two.
And Mr. Nipper has a second there. Anyone else? Mr. Serino? Further discussion? All of you then in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Now we will return to the agenda item resolution to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've also reviewed the consent agenda, find all those items appropriate, and moved that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
And second, Mr. Jordan, does anyone have any item they would like to remove from the consent agenda? There does not be one suggested there, so its motion is ready to be voted on, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Now, beginning with reports by standing committees, Mr. Jordan, Budget, Finance, and Investment.
Long agenda here tonight. First, we've got a general fund budget amendment. This is for architect work for the HVA in this courthouse. Resolution be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. County buildings, increased expenditures, engineering services, thirty-two thousand dollars, decrease, decrease undersigned fund balance, thirty-two thousand dollars, resolved this seventeenth day of August two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on that? All right, then, please cast your votes. Record the votes, please.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item M one B, special purpose fund budget amendment. This is the appropriate fund, appropriate funds remaining from the prior fiscal year. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Office, decrease restrictive for public safety, increase revenue, assets and forfeiture funds, increase, that's restrictive for public safety, is a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Increase revenue, asset forfeiture funds, one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Increase expenditures in service training, twenty-five hundred. Confidential drug enforcement, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Instructional supplies and materials, five thousand. Uniforms, five thousand. Other supplies and materials, twenty thousand, and law enforcement equipment, sixty thousand dollars. Resolved this seventeenth day of August two thousand and seventeen. Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Second, Mr. Piercy. Any further discussion? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item M one C is for information only. This is a presentation of state approval to issue ten million dollar capital outlay notes. This is no new money. This is just a housekeeping of stuff we've approved in the past. This is for your light reading, it's on your iPads and on the website. If any of you can't sleep at night, you can read that at your own leisure.
Mr. Jordan? There are no further reports from any of our other committees tonight. Is there any other business? Commissioner P.
This Saturday, August nineteenth, the Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department will be having a ham breakfast between six AM and ten. Would like to invite you all to come out. Thank you.
Any other announcements or any other business? Mr. Schaefer?
I'd just like to announce that the city of Laburn will be having its Old Timers' Day on Saturday, the ninth of September this year. And it starts early in the morning with the ham breakfast, the parade, and all kinds of events at Veterans Park. So hope to see a lot of you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other business? Mr. Jordan, please.
For the viewers out there, there are members of Middle Tennessee Electric. The annual meeting is next Saturday, August twenty-sixth, at the Embassy Suite, starts about nine o'clock, I believe. You can come for door prizes and, and learn about your, your cooperative here, if everybody's a member that doesn't live within side of the city limits of Marbury's Park.
All right, thank you. Any further business? There being no other further business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.